Here.
Ten present.
Does anybody have any memorial? Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Mayor, um, I'd like to have a moment of silent darkness in the chamber for Jeremiah Jeremiah Neillan Coffey, eight ninety, died Monday, October seventeen, in Osborne Life Care Center. Jerry was born in Worcester's on August eighteen, nineteen thirty-two, to Teresa Neillan and Jeremiah Coffey, who had both immigrated to the United States from Ireland. He was British nurse at St. Stephen Parish in Worcester. Jerry was very proud of his Irish heritage. At time invited those with whom he lovingly disagreed to kiss his Irish behind. Jerry served in the U.S. Army, where he lived by the motto of the first infantry, no missions too difficult, no sacrifice too great duty first. Jerry was stationed in Germany and honorably discharged in nineteen fifty-two.
I'm going to call the order, please.
Always a blue-collar, loyal and proud Worcester guy. Jerry worked for many years for the city of Worcester as a laborer and served on the city retirement board.
Please join me in prayers.
He loved singing along a church musical included The Sound of Music, Wizard of Art. In nineteen fifty-eight, he married Lillian Coffey, with whom he has enjoyed fifty-two years of marriage until her death in twenty-ten.
Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us
They enjoyed trips to Cape Cod, Canada, Atlantic City, and his, in his younger day, Jerry enjoyed dancing and playing card with family. Jerry survived by three children, Thomas Coffey, Lisa O'Neill Francis and her husband, Brian, and Patricia Coffey. Lisa was Jerry's primary caregiver and reside with her, he resided with her for a brief
and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city.
time, enjoyed travel, watching Law &amp; Order, Boston Sport with Brian. In additions to children, to his children, Jerry is survived by his brother, Paul Coffey, and his wife, Peggy. Jerry also survived by his three grandchildren.
We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified.
They had special place in his heart. He loved to play board game with them and even let them paint his fingernail. He's also lived behind his daughter-in-law, Lauren Coffey, as well as many nieces and nephews.
May we continue the legacy of our founders.
May he rest in peace.
Any other memorial? Counselor Leahy couldn't be here tonight, but he asked me to request a moment of silence on behalf of Mary Gil Jeffroy. May we be granted the state of wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good And if there's no objection, I'd like to read it from up here. Mary Gil Jeffroy, loving mother, sister, aunt, godmother, and friend. Mary Gil Jeffroy of Lowell died unexpectedly on October twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, in her home at the age of sixty-seven. of our city. She was reunited with her husband, best friend, and forever love of forty-one years, the We also pray for your special blessings and all those who are working toward transforming late Joseph Joey Jeffroy, who passed away in two thousand nineteen. Mary was born in Lowell on September seventeenth, nineteen fifty-five, the first daughter of the late Peter F. and Marilyn V. Leahy Gil, who named her in honor of the blessed mother. Mary was a graduate of St. Margaret's School and Lowell High School, class of nineteen seventy-three. our city to make it a better place to live and work. She worked in the Lowell Public School System for over thirty years. Her current position, her current position as an E-house clerk at Lowell High School allowed her to make a positive impact on so many students' lives daily. Amen. Mary's most cherished role in life was being the mother to her beloved Michael. They shared a special bond that can never be replicated. Mary leaves her daughter-in-law, Alisa Jeffroy. Please join me in allegiance to the flag. Michael and Alisa plan to welcome their first child, Natalie Josephine, in January twenty-twenty-three. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for Mary was overjoyed at the thought of becoming a grandmother. Mary leaves behind her five sisters and brother, Patricia, Patty Sepp, Kathleen, Katie Gil, Charles, Charlie Gil, Carrie Ann Gil, Roberta, Robbie Barnes, and Tracy Riley. She leaves her brothers-in-law, Matthew, Matt Sepp, Wallace, Bucky Barnes, and Peter Riley. Mary's loss will be felt deeply by her nieces and nephews, whom she loved dearly, Gina Sepp-Mortell, Christopher Gil, Peter Sepp, Bridgette and Garrett Barnes, Carly Gil, Owen, which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Connor, and Nora Riley. She also leaves behind her grandnieces and grandnephew, countless friends and extended family, who all knew, once you were in her heart, you were there forever. Please dim the light. Mr. Clerk. We now proceed to the mayor's business, two point one, communication, remote Zoom Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mitchell.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yeah.
Counselor Getchier.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
participation, motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Drinkwater, second by
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Janess, on favor of the I post a note, the I's have it, motion is carry.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
We do have a presentation at two point two by Michael Reyes on boxing at the Lowell Memorial
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Auditorium. Mr. Reyes, please approach your podium.
Hi, everybody. First, thank you for bringing me here. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Michael Reyes. I'm from Reyes Boxing. In October twenty-ninth at four P.M., we'll be hosting the first boxing professional match in Lowell in fifteen-plus years. Lowell has a rich history of boxing and being a strong town. I've committed to coming back every quarter here at the Lowell Memorial Hall, and we're excited to be a part of a very strong, proud community. We also offer and bring back, along in the name of Arthur Malo, attempting to bring back some amateur boxing, other than just the Golden Gloves to Lowell. So we'd like to bring back the Silver Mittens in March. So one of the things that we're asking for is to, you know, have the community be a part. We have a five-on-one C-three called A Fighting Chance, and it always gives back to the community in terms of donations to kids. So if you guys could be there, it'd be a great event.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and you inviting all the counselors and all members of the city to go watch the competition. Thank you for being here and thank you for doing the event in the city of Lowell. Any comments or questions by any of the counselors? Hearing none, motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Rourke, second by Counselor Robinson, on favor of the I post a note, the I's have it, motion is carry. Two point three, we do have a citation for Mr. John Noto. Just looking for John somewhere right there, right in front of me. And just preparing the citation for you and speaking to you today, we definitely have a bona fide scientist in the city of Lowell, with all the great companies and other projects we do. We're giving you the citation, not as a celebration, but as an appreciation for all you have done for the city of Lowell. I'm going to read a brief citation for you real quick here. And this citation was brought to my attention by Counselor Wayne Janess to make sure we recognize people who make a contribution to our city. Official citation, be hereby known to all that the city of Lowell in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to John Noto. John was born in New York City and moved to Lowell in two thousand eight. He is one of the co-founders of Lowell Makes, a community maker space that was started in two thousand thirteen and now has two hundred ninety members, sharing tools, ideas, and resources with the community. He also has served as a mentor at Entrepreneurship for All, or E-for-All, in Lowell, sharing the skills learned through founding his own company. In addition, John has been a downtown commercial and residential developer. Currently, John is employed as chief scientist at Orion Space Solutions, previously atmospheric and amp space technology research associate in Lualwell, Colorado. Prior to that, he had been vice president and Computational Physics, Inc. in Lowell for over five years. Previously, he had been president at Scientific Solution, Inc. in North Chamsford for nearly sixteen years. John has a bachelor of science degree in physics from the University of Rochester, a master of science degree in physics from Tufts University, and a Ph.D. in astronomy from Boston University. Now, therefore, I, Mayor S. Curry Chow, on behalf of the entire city council, hereby offer our gratitude and best wishes to John Noto for selfless community service to our great city of Lowell, Massachusetts, given its eighteenth day of October, two thousand twenty-two, signed by myself and the entire council body. Congratulations, John. Any comment by any of the counselor? Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to take a moment and acknowledge and appreciate everything that John has done for the city. You certainly are leaving the city in a better state than what you found it. Some of the things that you have done here, including Lowell Makes, your mentorship with E-for-All, and so many other things, will long outlast your time here in our city. So though you'll be gone to Colorado, and we will miss you greatly, we will have constant reminders around the city of everything that you've done during your time here. So thank you very much for all you've done. Best of luck in Colorado and come back and visit. Thank you.
John, would you like to say something?
Uh, just thank you, thank you very much. You know, of all the towns I've lived in Massachusetts, I'm not used to this. All the towns I've lived in Massachusetts, this really feels like home, and it's difficult to leave. And I do, I do like to imagine I'll be coming back one day. So thank you.
regular meeting, October eleventh, for acceptance. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Noon, second by Counselor Getchier, on favor of the I post a note, the I's have it, motion is carry. Before we go to unfinished business from the last meeting, I noticed the great Senator Steve Panche-Tacos is in the audience. Welcome.
Oh, sorry.
We're not ready for you to speak yet, Senator.
Actually, can we?
I just want to recognize you first. My apologies.
Mr. Mayor, can we suspend the rules?
Uh, Counselor Scott.
Can we suspend the rules to take eight point one out of order?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Scott, second by Counselor Mercier to take item eight point one out of order. Eight point one, vote authorize city manager execute temporary access agreement with Hamilton Canal Limited Partnership, wayfu reading and second reading by title. City of Lowell and city council vote authorizing the city manager to execute a temporary access agreement between the city of Lowell and Hamilton Canal Limited Partnership relative to properties located around two oh one Canal Street, including the Nicky Songas Bridge and areas around the Lower Pawtucket Canal in the city of Lowell, Massachusetts. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Scott. Any comments by the counselor? Would you like, is this the one we have, the registered speaker by the senator? Okay. Would you like the senator to go first? Okay. Senator?
That was just a dry run. I wanted to make sure I got here without tripping. Thank you very much. I'm here on behalf of the wind companies, who I represent as their legislative and executive agent. They are the principals behind the Hamilton Canal Limited Partnership. Wind companies has been in this city for decades, one of our largest taxpayers and one of our best corporate citizens. When the boot mills was languishing in the development, they turned to the wind companies. And now you see what you have over there with the boot mills west. When the air's lofts had its challenges, the boot mills, excuse me, the wind companies stepped in. When the Hamilton Canal project lost its master developer, the city turned to the wind companies to keep it going as a master developer until they decided what avenue they were going to go down, which they did. Currently, the wind companies has invested in the city of Lowell at two oh one Canal Street, a fifty million dollar project with over a hundred and twenty units of residential housing. It's currently fully leased. It will, it will, we will be doing a ribbon cutting, hopefully, the week of the twenty-fourth. We're trying to nail down the date to let you all know, and that's why we're asking for that temporary easement to beautify the area around the canal, the Songas Bridge and over on Canal Street. Wind companies looks forward to continuing their partnership here in Lowell as part of the Canal Street Safety Partnership, which was spearheaded by the manager's office and Counselor Janess, and also just being very involved in our civic and community events and nonprofits. So on behalf of the wind companies, we thank the city of Lowell. They do development. They have over two point five billion dollars in development, from Massachusetts to New York to New Jersey, to Washington, D.C., Pennsylvania, Georgia, Texas, California, all across this country. And they have told me that dealing with the city manager's office here in the city of Lowell, both the present city manager and the past city managers, and the city councils, both the present city council and the past city council, has been an excellent, excellent experience for them on getting the job done and completing projects, trying to get to yes. Every project has its challenges, but what they say about Lowell is they try to get to yes, and I certainly want to thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from any of the counselors?
Move to approve?
Move to approve. You did that. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Getchier.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Ten yeses.
Mr. Mayor, while we're under suspension of rules, can we take seven point three out of order also?
Motion by Counselor Getchier to take item seven point three out of order, second by Counselor Yem. Seven point three, communication appointment of Timothy Hawe to ZBA, motion to adopt by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Mercier. Any comments or questions by any of the counselors? Counselor Mercier?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just want to comment a bit about Timmy Hovey, and I've had the privilege to know him for many, many years, and I found him to be an upstanding, upfront human being. He works down on the corner of John Street. I know I'm probably embarrassing him now, but if anybody deserves this and will put their heart and soul into a project, that'd be Tim Hovey. So I certainly support this appointment, and I just had to say that. I know his face turns red when you talk about his brilliant crimson right now, but I'm very proud of him and I'm honored to know him. Thank you. Great choice.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you. I'd just like to add to the embarrassment of Mr. Hovey and just say that this is an incredible choice. Tim is a fair and honest person, and I just can't say enough what a great choice this was. Thank you.
Counselor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wish I had good things to say about Mr. Hovey, but I don't, so.
I guess we'll cut off the counsel comments right there. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Getchier.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Ten yeses.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I hate to be doing this, but I'd like to also suspend, while we're under suspension, if I, since there is a baby here, I'm sure that we're putting the child to sleep, but I just think it's better off at home.
Motion by Counselor Mercier to suspend.
Eleven, eleven point two.
To take eleven point two out of order, second by Counselor Scott. Motion eleven point two by Counselor Mercier requests city manager how Parks Department allow the family of Harry Walker Conde erect a park bench at a selected children's park in his memory, second by Counselor Rourke. Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very sad and touching story of a family, a wonderful family, who had a little boy, and some months ago, there was a massive search because children are so fast, and he left the place where the babysitter was watching him, and he went and he drowned. And it broke our hearts. They had a massive search. They found the little boy at Raleigh Farm next to the pond. And although I said park, I consider it like a certain section of the park. They would like a bench in his honor and memory to be put near that pond so people can enjoy the beautiful view in memory of the young boy. No one should have to lose a child, never mind practically a baby. And children are so fast. You could blink your eye and they're down the street, for God's sakes. But the mother is here. She doesn't want to say any words. But I know that at Raleigh Farms, we might say, what does the city have to do with it? But some time ago, with the CPA funding, the city took part in the money there. So it was a consortium of Mill City Grows, Jane Calvin's Parks and Conservation Trust, and the Audubon Society. Lowell was a part of that, too. So I want to seal this by including permission from the city of Lowell. They do have permission from the owner to do that. I'm just adding Lowell to the list to say, could we do that? So I'd like a roll call on behalf of the family, wonderful family. The mother is here. Yes, yes, and she doesn't want to say any words, but I know she would be so grateful. Thank you. Could I have a roll call?
Sure. Any other comments or questions before we take a roll call? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Getchier.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Ten yeses.
Thank you so much, and my condolences go to the family. I'm sorry.
We do have a few minutes before the public hearing at seven o'clock. Anyone else want to do a suspension of rule?
Since we're under suspension of the rules, do we have any registered speakers on any of our motions?
Mr. Clerk?
We have one on the next item. I don't see, it was supposed to be on Zoom, but I don't see anybody on Zoom. Jerry Lynn Darcy from Lipoli, is she here? Oh, okay. Four point one and seven point one B have registered speakers.
Mr. Mayor, could we take four point one and seven point one out of order, please?
Okay. Motion by Counselor Robinson to take item four point one and seven point one B. Motion response, B out of order, second by Counselor Yem. Four point one is the vote to authorize city manager execute underground electric easement one seventy-one Jackson Street from ten eleven twenty-two, wayfu reading and second reading City of Lowell and city council vote authorizing the city manager to execute an easement from the city of Lowell to Massachusetts Electric Company for the installation of an underground electric distribution system. Said system is located in, through, under, over, across, and upon a parcel of land situated on the north, northerly side of one seventy-one Jackson Street in said Lowell. And it's seven point one B. That's a separate one? So that one need, did the motion adopt by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Rourke? Would you like the registered speaker to go first, Counselor?
Yes, please.
Please.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Lynn Darcy, and I'm here on behalf of Lipoli Companies. I oversee all of the real estate. And first, I'd like to apologize for not being here at the last meeting. I believe there were some questions, and although this is a very customary and standard request, there were some questions that I believe we provided answers for to the town manager's office, and hopefully, they served everyone's interest in answering questions.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I don't think the answers made their way to us, or at least I haven't seen them. So probably going to duplicate some effort here, and I apologize for that. My first question is just, will there be anything above ground with this switchgear transformer that's on the green space, or is it all going to be underground? I couldn't really tell from the plans what the ultimate plan was.
It actually, I don't know if you're familiar with the actual location. It's going to be set next to existing transformers and in a small patch of grass that sits between the canal and the sidewalk. So the impact to green space, we believe, is very minimal. It's in an area where there are already transformers and utilities. So this is also part of a utility plan that was worked through with the city during an extensive process.
To take 11.2 out of order, second by councillor Scott. Motion 11.2 by councillor Mercier, request city manager how Parks Department allow the family of Harry Walker Conde erect a park bench at a selected children's park in his memory, second by councillor Rourke. Councillor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very sad and touching story of a family, a wonderful family, who had a little boy, and some months ago, there was a massive search because children are so fast, and he left the place where the babysitter was watching him, and he went and he drowned. And it broke our hearts. They had a massive search. They found the little boy at Raleigh Farm next to the pond. And although I said park, I consider it like a certain section of the park. They would like a bench in his honor and memory to be put near that pond so people can enjoy the beautiful view in memory of the young boy. No one should have to lose a child, never mind practically a baby. And children are so fast. You could blink your eye and they're down the street, for God's sakes. But the mother is here. She doesn't want to say any words. But I know that at Raleigh Farms, we might say, what does the city have to do with it? But some time ago, with the CPA funding, the city took part in the money there. So it was a consortium of Mill City Grows, Jane Calvin's Parks and Conservation Trust, and the Audubon Society. Lowell was a part of that, too. So I want to seal this by including permission from the city of Lowell. They do have permission from the owner to do that. I'm just adding Lowell to the list to say, could we do that? So I'd like a roll call on behalf of the family. Wonderful family. The mother is here. Yes, yes. And she doesn't want to say any words, but I know she would be so grateful. Thank you. Could I have a roll call?
Sure. Any other comments or questions before we take a roll call? Hear none. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Mitchau.
Yes.
Councillor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Councillor Getchea.
Yes.
Councillor Janess.
Yes.
Councillor Leahy. Councillor Mercier.
Yes.
Councillor Noom.
Yes.
Councillor Robinson.
Yes.
Councillor Rourke.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Yem.
Yes.
Tenyes.
Thank you so much, and my condolences go to the family. I'm sorry.
We do have a few minutes before the public hearing at 7 o'clock. Anyone else want to do a suspension of rule?
Since we're under suspension of the rules, do we have any registered speakers on any of our motions?
Mr. Clerk?
We have one on the next item. I don't see, it was supposed to be on Zoom, but I don't see anybody on Zoom. Jerry Lynn Darcy from Lipoli, is she here? Oh, okay. 4.1 and 7.1B have registered speakers.
Mr. Mayor, could we take 4.1 and 7.1 out of order, please?
Okay. Motion by councillor Robinson to take item 4.1 and 7.1B. Motion response B out of order, second by councillor Yem. 4.1 is the vote to authorize city manager execute underground electric easement, 171 Jackson Street, from 10/11/22, way full reading and second reading by title. City floor and city council vote authorizing the city manager to execute an easement from the city floor to Massachusetts Electric Company for the installation of an underground electric distribution system. Said system is located in, through, under, over, across, and upon a parcel of land situated on the north, northerly side of 171 Jackson Street in said Lowell. And it's 7.1B. That's a separate one? Okay. So that one need, did the motion adopt by councillor Robinson, second by councillor Rourke? Would you like the registered speaker to go first, councillor?
Yes, please.
Please.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Lynn Darcy, and I'm here on behalf of Lipoli Companies. I oversee all of the real estate. And first, I'd like to apologize for not being here at the last meeting. I believe there were some questions, and although this is a very customary and standard request, there were some questions that I believe we provided answers for to the town manager's office. And hopefully, they served everyone's interest in answering questions.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I don't think the answers made their way to us, or at least I haven't seen them. So probably going to duplicate some effort here, and I apologize for that. My first question is just, will there be anything above ground with this switchgear transformer that's on the green space, or is it all going to be underground? I couldn't really tell from the plans what the ultimate plan was.
It actually, I don't know if you're familiar with the actual location. It's Yes. going to be set next to existing transformers, and in a small patch of grass that sits between the canal and the sidewalk.
Yep.
So the impact to green space, we believe, is very minimal. It's in an area where there are already transformers and utilities. So this is also part of a utility plan that was worked through with the city during an extensive process.
Okay. The drawings indicate it was going to be underground, but is it above ground?
So the actual cabinet is above ground.
Okay.
But the wires go underground.
Sure.
And serve the property.
Okay. That was my impression of how it would be set up, so I just wanted to make sure what I thought was going to happen is what's going to happen. The other concern I had is just having to do with running the wires under the street there. It seems like it's going to require a closure of that intersection for some period of time, and that intersection is crucial to the operations of pickup and drop-off for that charter school that's located there. So I just wanted to make sure that there were some considerations in place, either by your team or by the city manager's team, to work with that school just to make sure that, you know, any impacts on their operations are minimized to the best of everyone's ability.
And I can honestly say that we've been working hand in glove with the city manager's office in addition to the building inspector, who I spoke to today. I attend meetings weekly on Tuesdays, and I was there this morning. First of all, I will say that I think the impact in what has been done over the last four weeks is extraordinary, and it was a team effort, a public-private effort, and that's really what we pride ourselves on. There is also, in addition to our project, there's infrastructure work going on.
Yes.
So they are also closing down streets, including Middlesex Street. We've been working to accommodate the traffic and the needs of the charter school. We intend on having very little impact on traffic as we have a road opening permit, which is timely, because once the winter comes, you can't obviously lay the utilities, and we're really trying to get this watertight and have utilities servicing this structure for the cold weather. So we are doing our best, and I think that everyone on the city level is happy with our efforts as it pertains to managing and mitigating traffic. We provided a traffic management plan, and although things have changed, such as the other group that's doing the Lord Overpass and the utility work, things happen. But I do believe that we've addressed every change and every unexpected challenge very well.
Okay. I appreciate that. I understand that this is a customary thing and that there are already transformers in that location. But I would just ask that going forward, we try to do what we can to preserve the amount of green space that's there, because, yes, adding a cabinet doesn't have an extreme impact on that green space there. But cabinet after cabinet after cabinet, eventually this adds up. And I know there are multiple other parcels in that area that Lipoli Companies is planning on developing. So just ask that as we go down this road, to try and do as much on the property as possible in respect for the neighbors' green space needs and desires, and as well as, and this is probably not on you guys at all, I don't know where this happened, but I would appreciate it as a councillor if this kind of thing, where we need to approve something on public property to accommodate a private project, comes to us well in advance of the building being mostly built. Just, at this point, there's really no option for anything here other than to move forward. The building is 75, 80% complete by the looks of it, so, you know, you got to put this somewhere.
No, and I completely appreciate and understand your concern, and it's great that you are concerned about green space. We are also very concerned about green space, and we're excited to move forward with the other parcel on the point, as I refer to it, because that will be activating a park that really is underutilized. So I think that in the long run, there will be plenty of green space, and green space that I think is more appealing to the public. So we certainly understand that, and we appreciate your concern.
Okay. All right. Thank you for being here tonight and answering my questions, and I'm out of questions at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to, actually, Ms. Darcy. We're frank, 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 looking through the Barracuda Network to see if the email that you sent us might have gotten held up in spam. So if you could send it to us, so we can send it to the entire council and just put it in the record, I'd appreciate that. And I do have to say, thank you very much to Dave Fuller, to the council, for the council's knowledge. Dave Fuller has really taken control of what's been happening over there and really trying to get all parties talking. I believe it's once a week where everyone meets on site, so.
Yes.
Appreciate Ms. Darcy being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Mitchau.
Yes.
Councillor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Councillor Getchea.
Yes.
Councillor Janess.
Yes.
Councillor Leahy. Councillor Mercier.
Yes.
Councillor Noom.
Yes.
Councillor Robinson.
Yes.
Councillor Rourke.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Yem.
Yes.
Tenyes.
Thank you very much.
We do have a public hearing scheduled for 7, but we did have a motion to take item 7.1B out of order to go first, so we're going to address the item 7.1B first before going to the public hearing. The motion response is on youth homelessness. Mr. Clerk, I understand this is a registered speaker.
Carl, Carl Howell.
Good evening. My name is Carl Howell. I'm the chief program officer at Community Teamwork. I just wanted to speak on this report. But before I get into that, I just want to also thank the city manager for his continued partnership with our organization and trying to address the challenges with homelessness in the city. But homelessness is devastating, is at a devastating level in the city of Lowell. 10% of our youth in schools are homeless compared to just 2% of students in the Commonwealth. We are seeing record numbers of homeless families in Lowell, so much that the state has asked all emergency family shelter providers across the state to see how they are able to respond by expanding and adding additional housing units for homeless families. During the pandemic, we had eviction suspensions, unprecedented rental arrears, rental rear funding, where Community Teamwork provided $23 million to owners and property managers just in the city of Lowell itself. And then we, families are also been provided shelter from family members due to not being, due to not having the fear of being evicted because of doubling up and tripling up their family members. The reality is that Lowell needs 5,000 homes yesterday, and it grows, and it grows monthly. The 1,457 homeless students mentioned in the report are members of roughly 500-plus families that are homeless in the city of Lowell. This also does not consider families that do not have school-aged children. It doesn't matter what kind of homelessness we talk about, whether it's individuals, youth, families, seniors, veterans, et cetera. The only thing that matters is that this community needs more housing. Housing is the only solution to homelessness. As a community, we need to look at barriers to housing and determine strategies to mitigate those challenges. Annualized leasing costs have risen over $5,000 per household during the pandemic. A lot of families have not been able to keep up with these rising costs. If you add in the increased costs of groceries, transportation, utilities, it is quick to see that the economic stability of our community is in a downward spiral. We believe that the council should take a serious look at the following strategies to improve policy to help mitigate the housing crisis. Zoning needs to be revised to reduce barriers to the development of truly affordable housing. This can be completed through inclusionary zoning practices that incentivize developers to create affordable housing, adopting flexible ADU ordinances, as well as reviewing and revising historic district ordinance changes. We also would suggest that there's an increase in the housing allocation of the ARPA funds from $4 million to $5 million, $15 million for the creation of housing, creating incentive programs and reduce other development costs that will help lead to units being more affordable for future renters. Thank you.
Any other speaker, Mr. Clerk? Councillor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thanks Lisa Golden, the directors of the Health and Human Service for the report. And, you know, the number is really troubling. You have, as Carl mentioned, 10% of our students are homeless. The fortunate part is that we have a great team of people, and you have the Lowell Public School do what they can with little they have to, with the policy that they have to ensure that students receive support and resources. That's good, but that's not enough. I know the CTIs, Alternative Housing, so many other organizations working in partner to address it. I agree that, you know, we have to, as a city, look at this number, this troubling number, and that we should do all that we can to mitigate this crisis. So that said, I was wondering if I, is it okay, Mr. Mayor, to refer this to the Housing Subcommittee to have further discussion on this matter?
Motion by councillor Noon, second by councillor Getchea, on favor of the Ayper, so you know the Ayers have it, that motion is carried.
Mr. Mayor?
Councillor Mercier?
I just have a question. I know it's going to a subcommittee, but I just have a question because they're talking, and this report talks about the McKinney-Vento program support, and it says that each school district must designate a staff person to serve in the role of McKinney-Vento homeless liaison, and the Lowell Public School has this role designated to the Family Resource Coordinator. Who is that?
Mr. Manager?
Is it Latifah Phillips? Because she's the Chief Equity and Engagement Officer. Is she also the Family Resource, Family Coordinator? Do we know who that is?
Okay. Through Mr. Manager to Ms. Golden.
Hi. Through the mayor, through the manager, to the council. That's actually the Family Resources Coordinator, Rebecca. That's her. She's
Rebecca Duda?
Rebecca Duda is actually our McKinney-Vento. And what happens is when the students and the families come into the Resource Center to register, she flags the students. And that's where we actually target the students so that there's no delay in them getting into school. So if they come in without their documentations, like their immunization records or anything like that, they can actually just get right into school. And that's also where if there's a problem for them getting housing, and they don't have a place to live, or if they're taken out of their house in Lowell, and they have like a hotel, and they're in Lemonster, we provide their busing from a different place so that they can stay in their homeschools. So she's like kind of the hub. So she's the person that does all of that.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Wanted to know.
Councillor Getchea?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. You know, reading through this, obviously, we all are ashamed of what goes on. But my question is that Lowell Public Schools currently service 1,457 students, or 10%. Do we have a running tally that tells us at the end of the year how many are no longer homeless and how effective that program is at the end to take people from homeless? And if we do, could we be provided something like that, that would say over the last five years, there were this many coming in at the beginning of the year, and there's this many, and the outcome is this? As you read through it, obviously, it's heart-wrenching when you see that any child is homeless.
So I know that the students are kept under the services for the full school year, and at the end of the school year, then they do take the students off of the services that don't need them, but they do keep them under the services for the year so that they don't, so all of a sudden, like if you get permanent housing, they don't take the services away from them. So there must be a way that they track them. So there is something that the school department does that does that.
And I also would wonder how many are actually re-upped for the same program the following year. So I think those are interesting data points to say how effective a program is, because when we look at numbers, the number can be skewed anyway. Someone comes in on day one, they have a messy divorce, and they're homeless for a month, and next
Or living with a grandparent.
Or living with a grandparent, exactly. So I think the number can be skewed, and in no way making light of it. I'm just trying to rationalize what the actual number is and how effective a program is going forward, because when you read that, it's definitely eye-opening. Thank you.
Councillor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Golden, through manager, through director Golden. The number, does that number, you count student that bound from living room to living room? Does that incorporate that number as well?
They track the numbers as best as possible, but sometimes I would assume that the high school numbers aren't completely tracked in there. So those are the numbers that are tracked through the Family Resource Center or go to the guidance councillor, because they put them on their X2 system, so those are the numbers that they know about. But I'm sure some of them slip through the cracks.
So those numbers, so the numbers that, of children, the student that bound from living room to living room or front, if they're not reported, you wouldn't reflect?
Some of them probably aren't reported.
So the number could be bigger than this, though?
Right. So there's some of them probably aren't.
We should have further discussion on this in the Subcommittee, though. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director.
Councillor Drinkwater?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, the numbers, when you look at them, they're truly, they're heart-wrenching. When you look at this report and you see how many students are going through these situations, and it's a number that we've been aware of for a while, but it is, it's heart-wrenching to see it go up year after year. Also, in looking at the report, you realize how many supportive organizations there are in this community that are coming together to provide students with services, which is really important. And I just wanted to follow up on the point that councillor Getchea made about measuring outcomes. And certainly, students that are moved from homelessness into stable housing is a really important outcome to measure. When you look at this number, I believe the way it's measured is at a fixed point in time. So there might be a student who begins the school year in a state of homelessness, moves into permanent housing, but for every student that moves into permanent housing, there may be another student losing their housing later on in the school year. So I think it is, it would be beneficial, I think, for this council, you know, as a follow-up to understand the outcomes. How many students are placed into permanent housing throughout the year, and also other outcomes, including how many students and their families are able to gain certain benefits, you know, whether it be SNAP benefits or temporary aid to needy families. How many are signed up for benefits that improve their situation through the McKinney-Vento services throughout the year? So I think these are all important things to measure, just to see the effectiveness of the program, and also to understand more about the students' situations, how many are moving from a period of homelessness into stable housing, and how many are becoming homeless throughout the year. So any kind of follow-up on measurable outcomes, I think, would be very helpful to learn. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
No other comments or questions? Thank you for being here. We now resume to where we left off on the agenda, which is the general public hearings that were scheduled for 7 o'clock. We'll start with 5.1, ordinance, create position, cross-connection, backflow administrator. This portion is now open to all those in favor. Open to all those in favor. Hear none. This portion is now closed. We're now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those who oppose. Hear none. This portion is now closed. Need a motion to adopt by councillor Drinkwater, second by councillor Janess. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Mitchau.
Yes.
Councillor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Councillor Getchea.
Yes.
Councillor Janess.
Yes.
Councillor Leahy. Councillor Mercier.
Yes.
Councillor Noom.
Yes.
Councillor Robinson.
Yes.
Councillor Rourke.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Yem.
Yes.
Tenyes.
The next one is six, utility public hearing. 6.1, National Grid, Verizon, New England, request installation of one Joe Pole on 135-155 Chumsford Street. This portion is now open to all those in favor. Open to all those in favor. You hear the speaker in favor?
Yes.
Yes, please. Please go.
My name is Vasna Eng, represent National Grid, 1101 Turnpike Street, North Andover. Yeah, we would like to get a petition to install a pole approximately 185 feet at the intersection, I mean, in the northern direction at the intersection of Ware and Chumsford Street. This pole is to facilitate the utilities that are going in for 135 Chumsford Street for, I believe it's a new housing apartment or something. So we're asking for that petition to install that pole in the public way.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor? Hear none. This portion is now closed. We're now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those opposed. This portion is now closed. Open to all those opposed, this portion is now closed. Any comments or questions by any of the councilors? Hear none, need a motion to refer to the White Inspector for report and recommendation by Councilor Robinson, second by Councilor Scott, on favor of the Ayopos, you know, the Ayes have it, motions carry. The last public hearing is 6.2, National Grid, request installation of underground electric conduit at 135-155 Chumsford Street. This portion, we're now open to all those in favor. You hear the speak in favor as well?
Yes, so this is, it's in, with the same project that is going on that I just spoke of. In order to get the utilities to the building, we're gonna have to pull cable that's gonna be going underground from the pole to the transformer pad that's gonna be installed on the customer's property.
Anyone else here speak in favor? This portion is now closed, we're now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those who oppose, this portion is now closed. Any other comments or questions by the councilors? Hear none, need a motion to refer to White Inspector for report and recommendation by Councilor Musia, second by Councilor Janess, on favor of the Ayopos, you know, the Ayes have it, motions carry.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now go to seven, communication from City Manager, which are the motion response. We'll start with A, motion response, Election Department, Councilor Musia.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have concerns with people calling me after the primary election with different happenings around the city at different polling places, and I did call the manager and made a motion and referred it to him, and it seems like they had a meeting, as I had asked, and they ironed it all out. For example, I had concerns, and I expressed them to the City Manager, for at the Rogers School take, for example, they couldn't, the poll workers couldn't like work, park in front of the school or anywhere near, it was, it was a professional day for the teachers, and there was a little bit of confusion, but that is straightened out, so that, I firmly believe that when it's Election Day, the poll workers and the people going to vote to the polls, they have priority to park in front of the building, to go in and make it as easy as possible for people that are coming out of their way to perform their civic patriotic duty by going to vote. That's why I felt that this was important to make sure that things ironed out smoothly. I know nothing's always perfect, but it seems like through the meeting, as I understand from this report, that they come up with a plan, and I'm happy about that. Can I just take you back to one spot? Because this is what poll workers told me and people that went to vote. Say you're going to the Bailey School because they went down the hill, and I know it's like a rotary thing where they go to the right and go around, but if you're not from around here and you're holding a sign for a candidate, you don't know that, so they were going left, they thought they could go left. There permanently should be a sign showing an arrow like this way. I would know that, because I go there, but people visiting, they don't know that you can't go that way. I know it's a circle, but there's no signage, and that was one of the complaints that I had. Are you familiar with what I'm saying? When you go to the Bailey down the hill, you're supposed to go to the right and around, people don't know that if they're not from here. They were going to the left, and people were honking, and so, I mean, I would just like to see a sign there saying, no left turn, or go to the right, or some arrow that points. You like to make it as easy and simple as possible for people to understand. Just because I know don't mean everybody knows it, you know what I'm saying? So thank you, that was another concern. But all in all, the report is great. Thank you so much, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the Council. Councilor, one of those concerns, we did speak with the principal onsite to make sure that that doesn't happen again. And we also, we're lucky enough to contact Reddell Tech, who did a fabulous job with the signs, so...
Oh, yes.
Our hope is that, I personally went around myself, and I witnessed there weren't enough signs or signs to appropriately point people in the right direction. So the goal here for the November election is to make sure we have, you know, more signs throughout the area to let people know where to park, where to go, and how to traverse around the area.
Thank you so much. And speaking about the Vogh School and signs, we have a very, very valuable partnership with the Vogh School. If you look in Senneville and see the beautiful sign that they had made many years ago, and through a car accident, someone went into it and busted it all up, put it down to the Vogh School, they made another one. They do a tremendous job to help the city, and I'm very proud of the people at the Vogh School. Thank you so much.
Councilor Gishia.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Just one concern through you to the Manager or to the City Solicitor. The Bailey School, can we make sure that that goes back to the Daily next election? I know the state moved it, but can we make sure that it goes back to the Daily School next election season?
Through Mr. Manager to the Solicitor.
I wasn't, I wasn't involved in the movement of the...
Mr. Manager.
Yep.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Councilor, that's something we'd have to contact the Secretary of State's office. They did assign that, and quite frankly, I think they did a pretty good job, for the most part, throughout the city. So I think that that is another challenge that we could take. That will require us, if indeed we can move that, to re-educate all the voters for the next upcoming election. So that's something that we can ask the Secretary's Office to give us the authority to do that.
As Councilor Musia outlined about the parking situation and everything else, and is written in here, all the issues that went on down there, the Daily School is preferred by the neighborhood. Every Highlands meeting and Mayor Chow can attest to, everybody wants it back at the Daily School, so I think this one-time thing, if there's a way that we can write to the state and get it back to the Daily School, I think that would be important for all the voters. Thank you.
Councilor Nguyen.
Thank you, I want to echo Councilor Gishia on this, that we were at the Highlands Neighborhood Meeting a while back. That was a concern, a concern about not only that, but also the handicap ramp going up to the room where people vote, it's so narrow at the Bailey, they wanted, I mean, they wanted to go back to the Daily, so I agree that we have to work with the state and all that, but, you know, I'm sure, you know, if we indicated to them and pressed on them that this is what the neighborhood expressed some of the concern, it's not that difficult, I don't think. The other things that I like to see is that I see the Directors of Election had been working with the schools and everyone else. I was wondering if the Directors would seek input with signage, signage planning, you know, seek input from the warden, from the polling location. The warden would know exactly, can help, can work with the warden of the, you know, from the polling location. To get input from them is too bad, the best signage should be allocated or placed, so to speak.
Thank you.
Councilor Robinson.
Thank you. So, I believe I'm the Chair of the Elections Subcommittee. We met once with Director Pappas when he first started, and from the little bit of time I've seen and the amount of work he's been doing, I think him and the employees in that office are doing great. One thing we did discuss the Subcommittee, and I'd urge all my colleagues, please, take notes for your districts, what you're seeing, this list of issues. I had to call down to elections the other day just to check on myself as a resident, my, make sure I was not doing the mail-in ballot, I like to vote in person, but as soon as this election's done, I'm fully anticipating calling for a Subcommittee meeting, and some of the things that I'm gonna be looking to address is just this, how do we improve the entire process? I mean, we have somebody that, he's not stuck in looking at what has Lowell done, and that's the way it has to be. We have somebody that can bring experience and what he's observed from other communities, what has and hasn't worked. And I think we do have some gray areas that need to be ironed out and kind of memorialized, and thankfully, he's very familiar, I feel, with the process involved. So when it comes to polling locations, one of the things, last cycle, that we heard was more polling locations, more polling locations. Mr. Pappas is on board to do whatever makes sense and make sure it checks all the boxes with the state guidelines, so I think the opportunity's gonna be here as soon as this general election's over, and all these little nuances can get ironed out, hopefully, for the next election next year. So please, keep notes of any issues in your district with polling locations or how we can improve, because as soon as the general election's over, I'm gonna be looking to call a Subcommittee meeting with the Elections Director, and we can work on this. Thank you.
Councilor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the former Commissioner of the Elections Office, I receive a lot of complaint from the volunteer early in the morning, they have to, they don't know who set up, no one set up the tables and everything, so the volunteer has to do that. The city said it's the school responsibility, the schools say, no, this is city responsibility. So as a result, the volunteer did that, and a few volunteer said that they, the elderly people, they volunteer, now they have to put up, to set up the location to get ready for the Election Day. So I'm hoping that, you know, we can iron out the differences, and then to set our responsibility who set up what, you know, for, on the Election Day. Second thing, if I may, I know it may cost money, because the voter's list, it's so, it's so outdated, people move all the time. I noticed that the City Election Department sent out notices, say sent out 10,000, almost half of them returned. My request is that, is there a way we can purge, the Elections Office can purge the name that returned back and take them off from the active mailing list? Because if you go to the Elections Office now, you see the return mails up high, so that's my second comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other comments or questions? Hear none, we'll now go to the next motion response, we already taken up B, so we're gonna go to C, which is Lowell Catholic traffic measures. Councilor Gishia.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I thank the Superintendent for the report, but I was hoping that the Traffic Engineer would have looked at this study much better, because as you can see on the diagram that was provided, you see that the old St. Margaret's property, which is now the elementary for Lowell Catholic, and the high school, enter both probably maybe 200 yards away from each other. So at the entrance level, there's hardly any queuing for the high school, so when the high school gets backed up, it backs up on the Stevens Street, and it sends everything down Stevens Street to the lights, everything gets backed up. One proposal that we could look at, and I spoke to Superintendent Goldner about this, is maybe they start to come in on Galligan, take the left into the property, cone off Galligan so you can't go down Galligan, but loop around the parking lot and do the drop-off in front of the gym. So now that gives you 50 or 60 more cars that can queue and not be on Stevens Street while they're queuing at the high school. St. Margaret's has a lot of area that you can queue, but the report doesn't outline anything, it just says, you know, we basically spoke to the Superintendent of Schools, DeMarco, and she's okay with it, but sending something into the Washington School area is a problem, because it's a neighborhood. We don't want to send that traffic going down there, so we don't want a left-hand turn out of Galligan. But if you look and you come in, now that becomes the entranceway to Lowell Catholic, you can actually queue around the parking lot and then do the drop-off, so you have that loop like they do at Reddell Lowell to drop off. So you could get more cars off of Stevens Street and actually have, in between now the two entranceways, which would be Galligan and the elementary, you'd have a gap where if there was a backup, emergency vehicles could at least pass. Currently, those two entranceways are extremely close, so if there's a backup, there's really not much to get around. But if both of them had entrances the other way, and then you look at also the light, is it designed right to let it go by? But I'll pass that over to Superintendent Goldner with a diagram that is written. I think you can put more, I think it's Lowell Catholics' responsibility for the queuing, not the city's. So the cars that are waiting in traffic should be on Lowell Catholics' property and not on Stevens Street, and there's plenty of opportunity within that property to do that. The other thing that's extremely interesting about the report is busing is in the same queuing as the actual parent. So if you had to come in and loop around, you could get busing out of that queuing, so when the busing stopped and dropped off all those kids, you could still actually have drop-off with the students and families. So it would be in between the two areas, as you loop around, there would be a dead spot there that you could come in and drop the busing off. But I do think it's something that we need to look at better. I understand that staff parks in the parking lot, but they should be able to still be able to park at the same time as people are queuing through that parking lot. So I would ask that we would have the Traffic Engineer look at this and see if there's a better way to get those people off of Stevens Street and use Lowell Catholics' property at the high school better. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you. Councilor.
Councilor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just express concerns with that plan that was just mentioned. My students attend Lowell Catholic, and the students come in the back entrance, and if you had the cars queued around the parking lot, the students wouldn't be able to park. So I think you would just add more cars into the queue, like a lot more of them. The buses do not enter the queue, they actually pull forward when they pull in so that the cars can still go around them. So to me, the only thing that would probably solve the issue would be a left-hand turn onto Galligan, because that's what's making the loop just not be able to continue around. They're basically backed up, you know, among them, like on themselves with the loop. So I don't know if you want to continue it with the Subcommittee, you know, traffic or whatever, but I don't think having the parking spaces blocked would help at all. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the Council. Thank you very much, Councilors, for the input, and thank you very much to the Superintendent for putting this together with his team. I did ask Ms. Altman, Traffic Engineer, to take a further look at this and actually look at the different traffic patterns and different traffic opportunities when it comes to even their land. So I know that the Planning Board, there could be some issues over in that area with left turns and right turns and neighborhood concerns, so we will be looking at that, and we'll have a follow-up report. Thank you.
Councilor Robinson.
Thank you. It seems like, you know, we've been struggling with something similar over in Senneville for quite some time, too, with Beacon Street. Lowell Catholic uses the fields over there, and Beacon Street gets shut down. Traffic-wise, they're parking all along Beacon Street, and continuously neighbors have been reaching out, asking what can we do different, so I think that might be something else to have a conversation with Lowell Catholic about, because they are using gauge field as a JV field, and when they clog up Beacon, you can't move in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Councilor Musia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And actually, last night at the Neighborhood Meeting with the Highland Neighborhood Association Meeting, a lady had to leave early, so she got me before I was on my way in, and she was talking about how it's very important that when the kids and the parents leave, arrive, it's one thing to cut through streets, she doesn't mind that, but the speeding after, it's like the parent drops the child off and probably is late for work and speeds out of there, so there's a hurry to get out of there, and they're nervous about that. Thank you.
No other comments, questions, we'll go to the next line item, which is D, motion response, HR process improvement update with attachment. Any comment, Councilor Robinson or Councilor Scott, who would like to go first?
Thank you. First off, I'd like to say we had a Subcommittee meeting, this presentation was given to us, I believe CFO Baldwin was there as well. Again, I echo, I'm happy to see the progress, I'm glad we're finally working out the kinks of the applicant tracking system. It's encouraging to see 651 applications being tracked between April and October, I think that number's only gonna improve. I think there's still a few bugs, if I am correct, to work out. One big thing, though, that stood out to me again in this report, and I'm gonna sound like a broken record, I think we need to do what we can to at least make a commitment to staff up HR. When we're looking at four with a recommendation of eight employees in that department, and we're wondering why the process is a little slower than we might like, again, that's another area of the city, I think... area the city I think is struggling with manpower. And I think by adding or making a commitment to add when we can with the resources in place, I think it's still going to help our efforts. I'm also encouraged that I've had some conversations and I think in the very near future, we're looking to partner, I believe, what is it, Mass Hire, in utilizing some of the things they're already doing and maybe helping our HR department to do some things that they want to get to. So, I think things are moving in the right direction, but again, I think from a council standpoint, we need to really take a look at staffing levels in HR if we really want to start streamlining this process and speeding up this process because the longer you wait to fill these vacancies due to lack of staffing, potentially you're losing good candidates and applicants. Thank you.
Counselor Scott? Your side, counselor?
Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council. I'm very happy to say that Ms. Calery, Mr. Coughlin and Ms. Norton have been working really hand in glove to try to assist the city. HR has been reaching out, working with the Career Center and Mass Hire, and I really believe that it's a partnership that I think the city really needs, and the, Mass Hire will be helping us with that gap that we have between four and eight, and I don't think Ms. Calery would disagree on the additional folks. So, thank you very much, counselor, for that, but I do think that we could, I think we're going to see better synergy throughout both organizations between the city, obviously, and Mass Hire. So, thank you for that, and thank you for the team for being here in case there were any questions to be answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calery, for being here and also bringing almost the entire Career Center staff to be here tonight. We now go to the next line item, E, motion response, the Lowell Memorial Auditorium, exterior repair. This is the motion response to Counselor Musia and to myself as well. Counselor Musia?
Well, I'm sure we all had an opportunity to go to the auditorium in the immediate presence, you know, and I've seen all the cracks and everything in the sidewalk outside to the point where someone that worked in the auditorium took me aside and brought me upstairs to the handicap ramp, and the very handicap ramp is so cracked and split and it's in need of massive cement work, and that's why I made that motion. And I knew that there was $200,000 slated for that, but it's divided into interior work and exterior work, so I don't know which amount out of the 600,000 is available. Did we even use any of it? I don't know if we can still cement now, I'm sure we still could. Do you think we're going to do any cement work? We had an occasion to go there just a while ago for the opening ribbon cutting of the bridge, and you could clearly see, and, you know, I don't want someone to trip in it and hurt themselves, especially a handicapped person. So, right in the immediate handicapped area ramp, there's some massive splits, and I don't want anybody to get hurt. Thank you.
Through Mr. Manager to Director of DPD?
So, we have $600,000. The state provided a 400,000, no, a $200,000 grant for the cultural facilities fund. The city added an additional $400,000 of capital funds. There are many needs at the auditorium. The area that is inside the building but below the handicap ramp in the back has had significant water infiltration over time, and so the focus of the available funds at this point is actually going to be to try to stop some of, make those improvements and stop that water infiltration because at this point, the interior has degraded in such a way that we need to invest those funds. We have looked at additional cultural facilities funds, are usually something that's due annually. Capital requests have been asked for annually and will continue to do so. The other request that we've gotten from the auditorium staff is related to some waterproofing, weatherproofing of exterior brick walls, again, to stop with water infiltration. So, although everybody has identified the importance of making the improvements to the concrete, we're right now using the funds that we have available to stop water from getting into the building so we don't have further degradation. But it is on our radar. We've done a site visit with planning staff, DPW staff, folks from the LMA, and so we're in active conversations just looking for any variety of funding that we can to make improvements to the exterior.
Thank you very much.
I just want to, if no other comment, by the counselor, Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I just sort of mentioned there's many needs at the auditorium, I'm sure we're well aware. Again, I think this is, it goes back to all our other facilities as well. Do we have an ongoing list or commitment with capital improvements to this facility as well? I mean, this, it sounds like, again, we're putting off fires. I think if we have an ongoing running list based on priority, we can make these commitments annually and quarterly or as money comes in. So, I think this is another one that, it's a hub of the city. Everyone in here can testify to the events and the usage this building gets, and with more usage is more wear and tear. But I think we need a long-term commitment financially, even if we don't use it, we get to a point where we're not using that money in the account that, yeah, it's still, I think this is among like our other facilities. We need a commitment that we can have the resources ready to go because we're trying to Band-Aid things to prevent further damage, but I'm not hearing how we're going to address this long-term. Thanks.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and once again, through you to the council. Yes, counselor, we have done studies in the past prior to me getting here, and I'm quite confident that Mr. Lally, who runs Spectacle down there, has a very good list. We have a, I would say, a fairly decent list as well of capital improvements that need to happen. The handicap and waterproofing that is vital to happen down there as well as the other pieces with the slabs that need to be repointed. But there is, we do have a list, actually. Mr. Baldwin has it up here. We do have it, and it's something from the perspective of a capital need that we would need in the excess of $4 million in total at this point in time, and that was from a study that was done a few years back. So, we do have, we do have the list here. I'd gladly share it with you if you'd like to see it, but we're looking at four-plus million dollars in deferred maintenance on that building.
Thank you. And again, so with the $4 million tabs sitting on our lap, it's only going to get more and more as the years go by, so I think, again, conversations around what kind of commitment can we comfortably take towards that $4 million tab right now? Thank you.
Counselor Janes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd just like to say I appreciate the discussion on this building. It is an important building. It gets used a lot, and so whatever we can do to bring it up to good working order and keep it there, you know, I'm going to be in support of that. One thing I just wanted to mention is not directly, you know, on the building itself but in the vicinity, I noticed when we were all there for the ribbon cutting last week, that the walkway where the bridge empties out, the new bridge empties out along that canal wall there, there's some pretty significant trip hazards, and I'm sure it'll only get worse over the winter, and I expect that the usage there is, of that walkway is going to increase pretty exponentially with that bridge open. So, just want to make sure that that's on the radar to be addressed probably next spring, or, you know, if there's anything we can do now, that would be good too. Thank you.
Any other comments from any counselors? If there's no objection, I'll make a quick comment from my page. I just want to thank the manager for the report and for allocating the funds to start on some repair. It's not enough money and it's not enough repair, but it's a good start. That building, as Counselor Janes mentioned, is very important and especially very important to the veterans community. I spoke with many members of the veteran community, and many of them are aging, and where they used to go to meetings over there before, now they are afraid to go meeting there just because of the uneven sidewalk, the handicap ramp, it's not that smooth for them to go up, so they are afraid of falling down and hurting themselves even more. So, I would urge the city manager's office to look at more funding. Again, I appreciate the $600,000 put forward, but as Counselor Robinson mentioned, if we could look for more funding to make sure that air is safe. Most important, you know, it's, we just had 100th anniversary celebration. It's really a center for all kinds of community events and celebration, but let us not forget the veterans who go there to remember their brothers and sisters that have fallen over the years. Thank you. With that said, and no other comments, we'll now go to the next and the last motion response of open space, community engagement. That was by, I believe, Counselor Noon and Counselor Gishia. Who would like to go first? Counselor Noon? Counselor Gishia, volunteer, you to go first.
Thank, thank you, Counselor Gishia. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a very good report. I thank you for the report, you know, and I urge you to continue to, you know, put online, you know, any project and seek input, you know, from not just the organization or the committee or nonprofit, but always, most importantly, the immediate resident who live next to that project park or whatever that might be. That's what, you know, that's where they're going to be, you know, living and spending there, I mean, it's next door to them, so the input, their input are very important. So, thank you for the report.
Counselor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to the manager. Manager Goldin, do you know how long these policies have been in place that are on this sheet? Have they been in place or is this a new policy? Have these always been the way we've done it? I just think that we should just give the public recognition on how long these policies have been there so that we can update the public with it. I don't know if you want to.
Through Mr. Manager to DPD Director?
Thank you. No, it has not been something that's been rolled out for a very long time. We have a relatively new planning team that's been leading the charge on several of these projects, so I would say probably since 2019, 2020 really, since the team has gotten on board and been able to kind of solidify planning. It's been evolving over time, but I think that the crew we have now and the plan that was put in that report is going to be the standard moving forward.
And I agree with it. I think it's a breath of fresh air that we're starting to engage. I just would ask that we would add to the policy that we would get in touch with the Board of Parks when we start these things because I think everybody who comes for a permit, who uses these areas, usually go to the Board of Parks first, so I think that that should be one of the initial engagements, is to try to get in touch with them so that you can actually get to the users and see where it's going from there. But I do think the policy is a breath of fresh air, and I thank you for the response.
Counselor Yam, Counselor Robinson, then Counselor Noon. Counselor Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, if you could, is it online that the resident can look up because particularly you have an email regarding openspace@LowellMA, Lowell.MA, so just a question, quick question.
DPD Director? Yes?
Yeah, the openspace@LowellMA.gov email is, has been in use and goes directly to planning staff. Anytime a resident has an inquiry that's related to a park or open space, that email automatically goes to the planning staff that's working on open space projects. In addition to that, people can utilize the city's website, and there is information about what's ongoing. I included some information in the report. The team's going to start preparing updates that will include on the council agenda as informational as well as a calendar of events for outreach, so people will be able to sort of identify where they might be able to find staff out in the community for some of these events moving forward.
Awesome. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. One of the things I've been seeing that works really well, especially in Centerville, in citywide, actually, DIY Lowell. I think they have valuable partnership. I believe it might be a volunteer base for the most part. They vet a lot of these questions in the community. They're working on the Star Memorial Park there, right when you come into Centerville to the right, and they went out and did, in the community, basically sketches and took surveys of what people would like to see out there, and then they put together a solid plan. Another important piece, I think, is neighborhood groups. I think in each district, the neighborhood groups, a lot of times you're getting members coming in and having an open conversation, and maybe we can schedule a rotating series where a member of DPD can come just to field some more, kind of like we did with ARPA. I think last night, we had one in Centerville, and there were some great ideas for open space improvements that about 25 people in attendance were just discussing. So, I think we have some great assets that aren't being tapped, and again, neighborhood groups and DIY Lowell are working. Thank you.
Counselor Noon? I'm all set. Thank you. That was the last communication from the manager, but we do have 7.2 informational report on Pearl Street. Mr. Manager?
7.2, the informational response?
Is that the 7.2 correct, that the Pearl Street, is that supposed to be on the agenda or is that not supposed to be on the agenda?
Nope, that's just a response, that's just a response item for the council.
Oh, that does respond also? Okay, I missed type on mine. Pearl Street, was that yours, Counselor Noon?
No, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry? Oh, so Russian petition? Okay, I think on my agenda it says informational report for some reason. Scratch, well, was scratched that? Counselor Noon?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, ask for suspension of the rule taking 11.4 hours orders. We have a gentleman here, he forgot to sign to speak on this motion, 11.4.
Okay. Counselor Noon, if you don't mind, there is another communication from the city manager to introduce the department head before we take a vote to accept and place the report and file also, and then we go to the suspension of the rule. So, I need a suspension of the rule to have the manager introduce the department head by Counselor Scott and by Counselor Yam. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. I'd just like to take this opportunity, many of you know this person, but Mr. Paul St. Seer, the new commissioner of DPW. Mr. St. Seer, if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself, I don't think you really need to, a lot of these folks know you, but, you know, where you came from and everything else and what's been going on, so just want to take this opportunity, and then after that, we'll introduce somebody else. Thank you, Mr. St. Seer. Commissioner?
I appreciate that, Mr. Manager and to the council. I'm delighted to be here. I've seen a lot of your faces from the other side of the camera, and I've been sitting on the school side for the last several years. This opportunity came along, the momentum that's in place and moving forward, I'm really delighted to be here, so I'm here, you can count on me, and I look forward to seeing all of you.
Congratulations and welcome to the city side.
And of course, it wouldn't be fulfilled without saying thank you to the new commissioner. I mean, he beat out a pretty good group of people, and I know that a dear friend of ours and someone that's been working extremely hard, but I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you very much to outgoing Commissioner Mark Byrne, but we're not going to let him go just yet, so we're not going to allow him to speak at this time. But all the hard work, and I know that there's been some real synergy between Mr. St. Seer and Mr. Byrne, and I wouldn't want to let this one opportunity go by, and there'll be opportunities in the future to thank Commissioner Byrne for all his hard work in the beginning of my administration, so not to be, we'll talk about it later, Commissioner, but thank you again publicly for all the hard work you've done and the hard work that you're helping Mr. St. Seer transition with. Thank you, Mark.
Counselor Janes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a comment on 7.2, so when we're done with this, if we can go back to 7.2, I'd just like to add something.
And...
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and once again, through you to the council. I just want to also take this opportunity to introduce the new library director, Steve Robichaud, Mr. Robichaud. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, through you to the council, I just wanna also take this opportunity to introduce the new library director, Steve Robichaud. Mr. Robichaud, if you'd like to come up and just tell the council where you're from, what's been going on. I've had a great opportunity to be over in the library on, on a number of occasions, and I'm very excited. Had an opportunity to see and speak with Mr. Robichaud. They did a great job, and this is our new library director, and we're gonna be expecting and seeing a lot of great things over there at the library. Thank you, Mr. Robichaud.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, councilors, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here this evening, to introduce myself, and to also thank you for the opportunity to join and lead the Pollard Memorial Library and serve the city of Lowell. I've had a great first week on the job with a wonderful team over at the library, and I look forward to my future here in Lowell. Prior to coming to the Pollard, I was, I served 14 years at Southern Hampshire University, for nine years as a technical services librarian, and then my final five years at Southern Hampshire University as the Associate Dean of University Libraries. So I really look forward for this opportunity and working with you all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Robichaud, for being here. And of course, I would also be remiss, once again, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council, to thank the interim director, Dory Lewis, who just did a fabulous job over there. And Dory is really, has, has held the Pollard Memorial Library together. So thank you very much, Ms. Lewis, for all the hard work, and for once again welcoming Mr. Robichaud and showing the ropes over at the Pollard. So thank you very much, sir.
Councilor Musia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before this gentleman leaves, I don't want you to leave yet, but further on the agenda, you may be gone, I want you to know, I, I, I think what I read was they're gonna finally fix the elevator over there? Oh, we're not? We're not? Oh, my goodness. I've been complaining about that every other week.
Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. I don't know if we're gonna do that, that's really up to the council.
Oh, well.
But I hope we're going to do that.
It certainly needs to be fixed. I know the, the importance of that.
Mr. Robichaud's here for five days, making it happen.
You see what I mean? That's great.
If...
Councilor Noon?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I wanna add, just, I just remind my colleague and those at home, every time you step in that elevator, making sure you have your cellphone with you, because you could, you could, you could get stuck there, because I, I frequent that library, and, and, and yes, they are, no, we know, Councilor Musia is correct, the students who were using called the fire department to get them out. I know that the city tried to address it, we have a number of, you know, the companies coming in, but it's gonna cost a lot, maybe we could probably end up needing a new elevator there. But I'm just reminding that every time you go into that elevator, make sure you have your cellphone with you. Thank you.
Councilor Gishia?
Commissioner Byrne can't leave until the elevator's fixed. That's a fair trade. All, well, we'll give him Pollard. I think all of them will be fixed before there, but...
Councilor Janess?
I have nothing on this.
I'm sorry?
I have nothing on this, but I do have a comment on 7.2, when you wanna go back to that.
Yeah, is that supposed to be in some other section of the agenda? Because it shows up in the communication, so...
You know, I think it's, it's, it's a response from the manager's team in response to a petition by a resident.
Okay.
So, and I just, I just wanted to comment on it because I think the use of this street in terms of parking has significantly changed since the courthouse is open. This is one of the closest streets where there are no parking restrictions. People who may be working in the court may have figured this out and are parking there all day, and that's what the, that's what the residents are experiencing. So I think that it warrants a little bit more of a look to figure out exactly what we can do in that area. Most of the streets around there, Middlesex Street, Appleton Street, et cetera, are all metered parking for some period of time. And I think Pearl Street, there's nothing. There's no signs, there's no meters, there's nothing. So people are just parking there all day. So I think it's important that we, we take a look at how this street is being used and whether or not it fits in with, with how we would like it to be being used. And, and free parking for, you know, a new group of employees may not be the highest and best use for that parking. Thank you.
Okay, so Councilor Janess, since it's, we're sort of confused where that's going, so you wanna just refer that to the city manager's office to take a look at it?
Yes, please.
Okay. With that said, so that would be separate than the communication from city manager, but we have completed and listened to all the reports. Now need a motion to accept and place on file by Councilor Yam, second by Councilor Drinkwater. On favor, say aye, opposed, say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. We have skipped around quite a bit. I think the next item that we're going to resume would be at 8.2, which is the vote transfer 100,000, Parks Street, way full reading and second reading by title.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Noon had made a motion to take another one out of order because we have a speaker.
Oh, that, that's right. So let, before we go, I think, Councilor Noon, thank you for the reminder, Council Robinson. Councilor Noon?
It's 11.4, Mr. Mayor. So we have a speaker who actually forgot to register us, and he wanted to speak on this, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Motion by Councilor Noon to take 11.4 out of order, second by Council Robinson, 11.4. I'm sorry? This too? Okay, that's right. Councilor Noon, Councilor Janess, request city manager have the Lowell DPD research and implement DEI policies used by Boston Planning and Development Agency, BPDA, the abbreviation, that increase roles for people of color and women and certified minority and women-owned businesses in all projects. Councilor, would you like the registered speaker to go first?
Yes, please.
Mr. Clerk, please call the registered speaker.
I don't have him registered.
The registered.
Need a motion to suspend to allow the speaker to speak by Councilor Noon, second by Councilor Yam. Please approach the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. Mr. Manager, I'm Joseph Boyle of 54 Lurie Street in the Highlands. I am also here on behalf of the Solidarity Lowell Coordinating Committee, and we wanted to express our strong support of the motion by Councilor Noon and Councilor Janess. We're very pleased by this motion, not only because it puts Lowell on the right side and expresses our support for taking DEI efforts and expanding opportunity to communities to whom it has too often been denied, but also for taking practical steps, looking at existing best practices, and finding real ways to take those important principles and implement them and put them into practice here in our city. So I think this has been a strength of this council broadly, to find actual practical solutions, to, to start finding practical solutions to these problems and not just to talk about them. So thank you for bringing this up, and we urge strong passage for this motion.
Councilor Janess, if you want to, I can go second. Thank you, Councilor Janess, for, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is simply asking the, the DPD directors, assistant city managers, to look to Boston, Boston actually implementing this policy now, and I sincerely believe that's also in the wish of these bodies as well, and looking at things with the DEI, you know, lens, so to speak. You know, this project, I'm, I'm hoping that this policy certainly will ensure success that's spread across the commu, our community, you know, while we incentivize the sustainable growth and create more transparent process. That's the hope, that this, looking at, you know, what being done elsewhere and implement here in the city of Lowell, go a long way for our community. So, and that's, I'm hoping to get the report from DPD directors, assistant city managers on this. Thank you.
Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have too much more to add. Councilor Noon said it well, thank you. I think this is an opportunity for us to take another step forward in this important arena that we've talked a lot about, and this is a good concrete step that has been implemented in other municipalities and has shown some strong benefits. So I think it, it behooves us to take a look at this and strongly consider adopting these policies and moving forward. Thank you.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think this is a, a great motion and an area I'm certainly interested in. I'll maybe just pose a, if there's no objection, a quick question to the makers of the motion. If this is the, the city of Boston policy that I'm thinking of, it also not only relates to women and minority hires, but also residency, sets goals for, for residency, essentially hiring city of Boston residents on, on city construction projects. So, yeah, I'm, I'm seeing, yes. So my understanding actually is that there's a lot of nuance and limitations in the law when it comes to setting goals such as this, and the city of Boston has much more stringent policies because at some point they were put under a consent decree. So other municipalities that have tried to follow Boston's lead in this regard haven't been able to go quite as far, which I find unfortunate, because I think this is a great policy that the city of Boston has in place. So I had actually filed a, a motion a while back that relates to women and minority hiring on city construction projects, as well as setting apprenticeship goals. I think it falls right under the same category of making sure we're, we're hitting these targets, not only on the state projects, where DCAM sets certain goals, such as with the Lowell High School project, but on our, our smaller city projects as well. So I think this is a, a great motion, and when the response comes back, I am just sort of curious how, how far we can go as it relates to the city of Boston, because, you know, again, my understanding is that they, you know, dating back, I think, a couple of decades, they have a consent decree that was allowing them to go a little bit further. So I know it's a complicated area, the area of the law, but the more that we can, we can replicate this policy and strive for it, I think the better we'd be. So thank you very much to the, the sponsors of this motion, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to echo my colleague, Drinkwater. I agree, I think it's a great motion, but I think, I hope the response comes back with a little bit of expansion as well. If can't do residency, can we explore, get information on at least apprenticeship requirements? Because we have a lot of pretty much development programs in our community that would love to have some kind of support, so thank you.
No other comments? On favor, say aye, opposed, say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. We now go back to the, the item next on the agenda we were left off, which was 8.2, a vote to transfer 100,000, Parks Street. And city council vote to transfer funds from the city manager's contingency account to the DPW's Parks overtime account and Street overtime account. Need a motion to adopt by Councilor Yam, second by Councilor Janess. Any comments or questions? Councilor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. You know, when we go through budgets, and we start in budget time, and we start talking about the numbers within, and then we get reports that point to, to me, poor budgeting. When you look at the budget over the past as provided to us from the CFO, you see that the past 10 years, the Parks Department has had seven transfers into this amount, into this account. And you look at it, they've spent $1.6 million over those 11 years, or $146,000 in overtime. If we knew that that was the patent that was there, why would we come out and budget $75,000? And when you look at the overtime report currently, you see that a lot of the funding is going towards the trash pickup. You have some employees making well over $10,000 in overtime in the last three months. And if it's coming out of the trash side, why wouldn't we transfer out of the trash or put the, the employees' overtime out of the trash side? How much did it cost us for the Parks Department, the pickup of the barrels in the city, when it was contracted versus what's happening now? Do we know that answer through the mayor to the manager?
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. CFO?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when the track, the Parks barrels pickup was under the waste management contract, there was a provision whereby the city could assume responsibility, and there was a savings associated with the taking over the Parks barrels. That number was $140,000.
Is that number still, was that still incorporated in the trash side when we did the trash and recycling number? Was that incorporated in that account? Because that account had far superseded what it was the previous year in funding, and if the funds were there, why wouldn't we transfer out of that to cover the overtime cost of what is budgeted in that area or wasn't budgeted? I don't know that answer, because the, the number went up, and maybe it was because of gasoline escalation costs or something like that, that that number went up. When you look at the Parks Department overtime, in the last three months, you're seeing that it already went over by $3,200 over what your initial budget was for that department. So that department was $75,000, and when you look at it, you got $83,993. So in three months, we already superseded the original $75,000 that was budgeted. And, and when you look at, there's a couple employees that, when you look at what they're getting in overtime, there's one that was $14,000 in three months, and the other one is $11,000 or $12,000 in three months. And obviously, those two are the ones who must be picking up the trash, which makes a lot of sense. But if the funding is coming out of the trash side, why wouldn't we transfer over in that? In $75,000, we all knew, just like the fire department, we talked about that overtime account, at 1.5 would never be sufficient enough, and I'm still waiting, because I already know we're gonna see that transfer when we shouldn't have seen it. And, you know, we're, we're taken out of this contingency account when we could have budgeted within if we went by the patents of the past. The patent of the past of this account is $146,000 over the last 11 years. If you take the total amount that was in overtime and you divide it by 11, the 1.6, it's $146,000. And now we just transferred over $100,000, we're three months in, and we already superseded that, this $75,000. So I just, I guess my, my response to all of this is that I'm hoping going forward, and I know, Mr. Manager, you were just in the beginning of, of setting a budget, I hope in our next budget, we put actuals in there based off of the past history of the accounts, and not just put in a number for a placeholder and then just keep coming back here for transfers, because that's not budgeting. Because obviously, the accounts we're taking it from, and I understand we're taking it from contingency, they're over budgeted in order to fill in deficiencies in our budgeting process. Or we wouldn't have that money to put there, and we'd have to come back to the taxpayers. And, you know, some of the things that we're using this overtime for, do we get reimbursed when, like, the North Common, they had an event over the weekend? Do we get reimbursed, the Parks Department, for that, for the employees that actually are at that event?
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. CFO?
Every event is different. Generally speaking, no. The fee, the permit fee that a, an organization would pay, is intended to be sufficient to cover the cost associated with preparation and cleanup afterwards. Now, that's a separate conversation, that the administration will be bringing forward a number of revisions to the fee schedule, so that they are commensurate with the services provided, but that is the mechanism by which the city is reimbursed for costs incurred for festivals.
It's extremely tough to believe that we're gonna charge someone who puts on an event for a superintendent of Parks to hang around and watch people do their job. So this weekend, we have a superintendent of Parks who's over at the North Common watching his workers work, which I would hope that we wouldn't have to have that type of oversight and cost to the taxpayer for these jobs. When we talked about this with the assistant city manager about some of the issues in the parks that are not being done already, and right around the corner, we have Veterans' Day. And if you go look at the Monument for Mr. Calery up at Calery Park, that wasn't taken care of at all. It's weed overgrown, there's no flowers that have been put on it, and I'm sure throughout the city, they're all not taken care of. So I'm having a hard time processing where all of this funding went, and I understand that when you look at it, the South Common has taken a lot of the Parks Department time, and it makes a lot of sense that that's where it's going. And then we're trying to catch up on the overtime with our routine stuff. We either have to figure out the South Common, or we're gonna have to keep charging residents more and more and more money. more and more and more money for services that we expect as we do all of these things in the city. And I just think that if we're going to properly budget, we should budget based off of the history and not off of a placeholder. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. Again, historically, one of the big problems that jump out to me, we have a position of a superintendent that's hourly. We don't know year to year what the weather's going to do. We don't know how many hours we're going to need supervision. That, in my opinion, should be a controlled liability with a salaried position eventually. We, again, for years, we have work and forming. Our work and forming are trained to supervise people in the same or lower pay grade. You're probably looking at about a $40-an-hour difference to have a work and forming supervise that can actually physically do the work, as opposed to a superintendent supervise, that's not allowed contractually to do the work. On top of it, splash pads. They say splash pads is, it was a big expense, which historically now, we're looking, splash pads has always been covered. Actually, they scaled back the way they're doing splash pads, because it used to be a four-to-five-hour shift per employee for every splash pad on a Saturday and the same thing on a Sunday. Now, it's a five-hour detail for one employee that covers all splash pads. So, I don't see an increase with that. Are we paying that same supervisor to come in? And if that's the case, what are they supervising if an employee is going to the splash pad and doing what they need to do? I don't understand how we're transferring that kind of money, and if that's the case, it's desperately needed, we needed to budget that upfront. And I think these kind of transfers are fine, the work has to get done. Another thing that I've touched on is trash. These trucks aren't rolling sometimes till noon, and I've been beating that drum. Why are these trucks not rolling at 7:00 a.m.? How much of this work are we getting done on straight time in this department? I mean, I'm seeing a lot getting done on overtime, and again, some things have to get done. There's no way around it. But I'd like to see the breakdown of what's getting done on straight time versus what's getting done on overtime, and are we doing a 50-50 split here? Because we're talking decent money getting transferred out three months in. Thank you.
Counsel Gitchia?
Just one more question through you to the manager, and it was posed to me by someone, obviously, who works there. We have non-salaried employees, hourly employees, in the union and then outside the union. The union employees are made to punch a time clock, which records their regular time and their overtime. But the salaried employee, the non-salaried management employees are not made to punch a clock. Why would any employee who's non-salaried not, I mean, yeah, who's non-salaried not be made to punch a clock? If we're making anybody punch a clock on overtime, we should know every person who is not salaried should be punching the time clock up at the Parks Department, the Street Department, and Lands and Buildings, where there's a time clock where other employees are punching. Whether it's a union issue or not, people should be punching those time clocks if the taxpayer has to pay the bill. And to me, management should all be salaried at that point. And that's just my opinion, is if we're going to pay people to create overtime, like we saw at Hadley Park over the weekend, then they should not be benefiting from the overtime.
Mr. Mayor? I'd just like to touch on, I filed a motion about three, four weeks back, asking exactly that. Why do we only have certain hourly employees punching clocks from a certain union, while, I mean, in some instances, it's to the point where you have employees going from the work garage on the location to the office, where there's employees that are hourly in a different union, sitting in the office, and the employees from the work bond have to punch the time clock, meanwhile, the people sitting around the time clock don't? I mean, something has to change, because there's no, and I've seen for years myself, we have supervisors that walk out the door into retirement with the maximum on a sick days, the maximum on vacation time, and cash out. I mean, I know there's been some adjustments to kind of curb that, but you're allowing the timekeepers not to keep their own time. So, I think that's something we need to take a hard look at. Thank you.
Good question by both of you. And since you made that motion, maybe we can request, instead of answering tonight, maybe we can have a more detailed response through the motion response next week, through the manager's office, if that's okay by both counselors? One of a great, great discussion, and I think we're ready for roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Counsel Lee, Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yum.
Yes.
Ten years.
Next on the, the next vote is to transfer 340,000, PW, WAFU reading and second reading And the City Council vote to transfer funds from the Municipal Facilities Stabilization Fund to the DPW's school projects account and repair and maintenance of buildings account. Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Scott, second by Counsel Yum. Any comments or questions on this vote? Counsel Gitchia?
Through you to the manager. I'm not sure which account this comes out of. I guess we'd ask Coroner this question. Can these funds be used out of OPER, or is this OPER money? Because it says HVAC on it, so I'm just trying to figure out, or is this the glycol that's going in them?
Sure. Through Mr. Manager to...
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Counsel, no, this is the actually, the marijuana account that we have for the building maintenance that the council, I want to make sure I say this right, the council is ensuring that we can spend this money towards maintenance of buildings. And the glycol, you are correct on that. That is something that we are utilizing currently net, well, we will be doing it if the council decides to transfer, and I think it's going to be beneficial for us in the future to ensure that our preventative maintenance or our maintenance in general is up to par. We're trying to bring it back up to that level at this time. Commissioner Byrne had found that, and it's something that I believe we feel is so is extremely important for the benefit of our buildings.
I guess my question through the mayor to the manager is, can OPER funds be used for this, and can that be replenished and used other places, because it's for an HVAC system? Through you to...
Through Mr. Manager to the commissioner.
Through you, the mayor, to the council. This is for our heating system. We got to put chemicals into the system in the glycol, so it's not allowing, it's more or less our heating. And the OPER funds are only for ventilation and HVAC, so the heating, we can't use it for heating. I mean, that's what we were told, based on the rules.
So, the same units not for the heat and has the AC in those, in these situations? Because if it's used for the AC, then it can...
With the glycol and the chemicals going in, we're using it to maintain our boilers to get our heat up, versus the glycol going in for AC in the summertime.
Mr. Manager?
And the chemicals that we put in there as well. The water, going through the water system. That's what I'm being told through the OPER funds.
That's right. We had Mr. Flynn, counsel, we had Mr. Flynn look at this, believe me, if we could have, and if we still can...
We're trying to get everything through OPER if we can.
That's right. And thank you, Commissioner, for that. The glycol conversation had taken up some time. Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other comments or questions here on, Mr. Counsel Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This vote is very important. This is the Polyglot Memorial Library Elevator vote, too. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out. Here are no other comments or questions, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Counsel Lee, Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yum.
Yes.
Ten years.
The next section on the agenda is the reports of the subcommittee. I understand the neighborhood subcommittee now are on the road, and they were at the Highlands Neighborhood Meeting last night. Counselor Gitchia, the, Counsel Mercy, my apologies, Counselor, Counsel Mercy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please bear with me, it was a long meeting, and there were a lot of people there. The Neighborhood Subcommittee held an on-the-road meeting with the Highland Neighborhood Association's monthly meeting last night. Present were subcommittee members Counselor Eric Gitchia and Counselor Wayne Janess, as well as the city clerk, Michael Geary, along with Counselor Vesna Noon, Counselor John Drinkwater also attending, Assistant City Manager Sean Machado, thankfully, thank you for being there, and from the mayor's office, Erastus was there, State Representative Ratty Maum, and the police chief Barry Gulner. He was given a residence and members and updated the present crime stats. And also was Captain Kilmartin, who reported a total of six crime types, two aggravated assaults, one robbery at the Bank of America with a person yielding a knife, two shop liftings at Lowe's, of which charges were filed, and one vandalism on Stedman Street by way of spray paint. We began our meeting for the purpose of discussing neighborhood issues and concerns. There were well attended, there was a well-attended crowd, and first to speak was former City Councilor and Mayor Edward Bud Caulfield, who had many concerns. Why did he have many concerns? Because you can take the man out of the council, but you can't take the council out of the man, and this is why he was there with all these concerns, and they were as follows. He talked about trash, filth, slumlords, flatbed trucks parked at the corner of Wilder and, Wilder and, I don't remember the, yes, yes, right, vehicles parking on sidewalks. So, let me explain each issue as he discussed them. He talked about Mayor Giuliano and how he cleaned up Times Square. He had his workers stay on top of the cleanup issues, and he compared the procedure to the broken window concept. If you let one issue go unnoticed, soon many will follow, and soon after, you will never get a handle on it. This concept is something we should consider, such as years ago, when we had the tagging graffiti problem, we stayed on top of it, and you don't see much of that now. Bud talked about slumlords that rake in a ton of money and keep their property in disarray. They don't fix anything, they don't cut the grass. He talked about a property at 520 Princeton Boulevard, the yard is a total disgrace. We need to take another look at 520 Princeton Boulevard. It's a nice offer for the neighbors, to the point where a neighbor didn't sell his house and move away, because nobody seemed to care one way or another, but I don't know. We have ordinances to address this issue called minimum maintenance, but is anyone enforcing the health codes? A question he asked was, how many code inspectors do we have? Assistant City Manager Sean Machado answered that we have six health inspectors. Well, are any ticketed, are we, do we, any tickets being issued? So, I want to stop right there, and I think I should have done this last night, but I didn't. So, I'd like to suspend the rules and make a motion to ask for a report on how many and what type of fines have been issued to landlords, absentees or not. Can I make a motion to do that?
Motion to suspend the rule and make a motion... On the floor by Counsel Mercy, second by Counsel Gitchia.
To find that out, to see if we actually do, and how prevalent is it? Bud also said that when festivals come in the downtown area, the city crew comes in and cleans up the downtown in excellent shape. How about cleaning up the rest of the city? The city doesn't have to be rich, just clean. How about starting with the vacant lot at the corner of Fletcher Street and Broadway with the overgrown grass and weeds and trash? It should be cleaned, and we should pay attention to detail. And I'd like to know who owns that property, and are there any plans with that? Another issue he brought up, he and his neighbors are very concerned over the fact that they saw a huge rodent crossing the street. The large rodent went into the neighbor's yard, and Bud and the neighbors bought traps to catch it. This problem is due, in his opinion, to people and the homeless throwing bags in different places, like near the Vergarpolis Bridge area. This is filled with discarded food. He suggested that barrels be put out, so plastic bags can be put in them, making it less easy for the rodents to get fed. Counselor Janess had then explained the rodent policy very well, I might add. That was very helpful. More issues were snow removal on sidewalks and people not fined and held accountable for it. Speeding, the message was for the city to pay attention to detail, the small things. A lady asked me privately about when Lowell Catholic parents drop off and pick up children, it's not so bad to use their streets as cut-through, but the speeding is not acceptable, and they're tending to do that. Parks are not kept up to power, especially the Calery Monument Stone area on Stevens Street, grass is overgrown. One woman in the audience asked why, that when she looked on the city's, this is very important, because I thought this was very helpful, too, that when she looks on the city website, she did not know what district the counselor represented her was. The names on the city website have everybody's name. And I know that it can't handle this, because I talked to Maran Fernandez this afternoon just to discuss this particular issue, and he said that it doesn't hold any, the model of it, you just can't do it. But he said it's a very good idea, he would look into it to see if a counselor's name would be there, for example, with the district. I had, for example, Counselor John Leahy. It's nice to know his name, but if we put District 3, Belvedere, that would be helpful of people looking at the website saying, oh, Belvedere, District 3, that's John Leahy, I'll give him a call. Counselor Eric Gitchia, District 8, oh, the Highlands, that's, that would be very helpful, and I think that's a very good idea. And I want to be fair here. If you look up city counselors and you look at my name up, I have a biography, because I molded at the hills, and it was there way back when. But in fairness to my colleagues, everyone has the opportunity, they should anyway, to have a biography and what subcommittees you're on, and this, and a little bit about yourself, whatever you want to put. And I think the mayor's office is trying to put that together through Erastus, your aide, Mr. Mayor. So, I think it would be helpful for Erastus if whoever wants a little biography or whatever, to put it out forward and give it to Erastus, so he could give it to MIS, so they could do that. But I think these things are very important, so I did discuss it with Maran. Now, I didn't tell him to do anything, because he doesn't work for me, I can't do that. But we discussed it and made suggestions and bantered back and forth, and I gave no orders to nobody. After the meeting, former Counselor Caulfield talked about line painting. Now, we all know that once the cold and the frost sets in, we can't paint the streets. He suggested that we hire a contractor in the spring and get the whole city done at one time, in one timeframe. All that neighbors want, not just in the Highlands, but everywhere in the city, they want their trash picked up, sidewalks cleared, often the winter, crosswalks painted, a clean city. You don't have to be a rich city, but to be a clean city, that says a lot. Potholes filled, control the speeders, and no flatbed trucks or cars on the sidewalk. These are the concerns that we had, and so, that's my report as a report of progress. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from any of the counselors? Just a quick comment to Counsel Mercy on the, my office will be reaching out to the counselors tomorrow. Please submit the, your photo and biography to him, as Counsel Mercy mentioned, and he'll forward that to MIS. Thank you. Any, here are no other comments?
And, Mr. Mayor, if they could... Mr. Mayor, if they could put their district and who they, what section they represent so to make it easier for the person typing that all in to the website. Thank you.
Wonderful. Need a motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Counselor Noon, second by Counselor Janess. On favor, say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. We now go to Section 10, petitions. 10.1, claims to property damage. No other comments. Motion to refer to law department for report and recommendation by Counsel Drinkwater, second by Counselor Yem. On favor, say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. We now go to 10.2, miscellaneous Christian Troy Riverside Townhouses. Request installation of no parking sign near entrance of Riverside Townhouses on Metisack Street. Here no comments or question. Need a motion to refer to traffic engineer for report and recommendation by Counselor Noon, second by Counselor Gishia. On favor, say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. We now go to the front section of the city council motions. We'll start with 11.1. Counselor Mercy, request city manager have traffic engineer install two school drop-off parking-only signs between 7:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. on Reed Street entrance to St. Michael's School, second by Counselor Robinson. Counselor Mercy?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say the motion speaks for itself, but I want to speak a little bit about this motion that speaks for itself. And just to say that today must be the motion of drop-offs. Drop off at Lowell Catholic, drop off at this place or that place. But I had calls from parents that drop off their children at St. Michael's School, and especially the entrance to the school from Reed Street. And it seems, and I hate to say it, but neighbors park right along there. And if we could have two signs there with the timeframe so that they're out of the street, they pull over to the sidewalk and let their children out and then take off. And I, and I made this motion, and I ran it by the principal, Anne Gallagher, of St. Michael's School. And I said, what do you think about this? She said, oh, please, please do that. That'll help us immensely. So if we could, and I, the traffic engineer is gone, but I, okay, thank you so much. I think that's important. Thank you so much.
Thank you. No other comments or questions? On favor, say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. That motion is carry. We already taken up 11.2. We now go to 11.3. Counselor Noon, request city manager invite the citizen advisory committee to report on activities to date and any plans for the future, second by Counselor Rourke. Counselor Noon?
Motion speak for itself, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. We, on the favor, say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. We already have taken up 11.4. We now go to 11.5. Counselor Janess, request city manager have proper department investigate and resolve accessibility concerns with the crosswalks at the market at Dunn Street intersection, second by Counselor Drinkwater. Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. These are the crosswalks on the, I'd say the Mac Plaza side of Dutton Street. So the button to request the stop walk, I mean, sorry, to request the crosswalk signal is about two to three feet away from the finished pavement. It's very rocky. It's tough for people to get over there on foot. I saw someone actually, as I was driving over to the meeting tonight, I actually saw someone trip and almost fall trying to push that button. I can't imagine what it's like for somebody in a wheelchair to try to get to that button. And when you combine that with the fact that the other side of the sidewalk is closed because of the bridge, people can't get to that button either. So it's really tough. I didn't know if there's anything we can do. I know there's concerns of national parkland and everything involved here, but I'm hoping there's something we can do, short-term to make it more usable, and then longer-term to make it, you know, better going forward. I just wanted to bring this up. Thank you.
No other comments or questions? On favor, say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. We now go to motion 11.6. Counselor Gishia, request city manager provide the city council with an update on the repair replacement of the ADA ramps throughout the city, second by Counselor Mercy. Counselor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. We had a very good presentation from the city engineer Chang back at the beginning of the construction season about replacing the ADA ramps around the city, the pads that are broken. And I'm just wondering where we are in that process. So we're looking for an update on how many have actually been done and where we're going because it was supposed to start, I believe, in a radius around City Hall. But as you walk in front of the old leaners, you see that that pad is, I know I'm getting old, the old leaners. But you see that that pad is blown out and needs to be repaired. Thank you.
No other comments or questions? On the favor, say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. We now go to motion 11.7. Counselor Rourke, request city manager update council on pedestrian crosswalk at the Rourke Bridge, F W Highway, second by Counselor Yem. Counselor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is something I wouldn't normally file, just made a phone call. But this was actually filed about a year ago, and I don't think there's been any update since then, Mr. Manager. So it may be new to you, but maybe hopefully somebody at the, at the state DOT may know about it. Thank you.
No other comments or questions? On favor, say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. The last motion of the night is 11.8 by myself. Request city manager have the appropriate department investigate the installing of a push button pedestrian crosswalk on 500 Patuck Street across from the Fortune and Flame Suite, boss, second by Counsel Robinson. If there's objection, just a quick comment from up here. There is an existing crosswalk, but it's all faded out. You could hardly see the line, and that area is being utilized by many members of the residents. The UMass students going from one campus to the next. There's the Bartlett School. There's the pedestrian walking on the other side along the river. And of course, you have the new ice cream place over there that's driving a lot of pedestrian. This would be a great public safety to install the lights over there, the push button over there. Any other comments or questions? Here none. On favor, say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. Any announcement? Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This Saturday, the Cambodian, Cambodian-American community reflecting on the 31st anniversary of the Paris Peace Agreement in Cambodia is hosted by UMass Lowell and the community. It's on Saturday, October 22nd, from 9:30 to 12:30 p.m. at the University of Lowell Alumni Library. Address is 84 University Ave. There'll be parking in Comknock Hall as well as University Crossing. Everyone invite to attend. I think all the council have it on their desk as well. Your assistant actually put it on everyone's desk before the meeting started. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. I got two announcements. First, this Saturday, Lowell Lidda Crew and St. Michael's Parish, they're working together in Centerville. They're gonna be meeting at 9:00 a.m. and work until 12:00 p.m. They're meeting at Eagle Park, which is 99 Jewett Street, to do a fall cleaning around the meeting area. So anyone that's available, you're welcome to come out and join. And we have an event going on. I'm working in conjunction with Greater Little Chamber and St. Michael's, and it's a sneaker and boot drive to benefit the Green Alge Elementary Schoolchildren. It's running from October 17th to November 5th. We're taking new and gently-used sneakers and snow boots, as well as monetary donations. And the events and the information regarding it is all over social media. And if any residents are interested in contributing, feel free to reach out to me or Danielle McFadden at the Greater Little Chamber, and we can facilitate where you can drop off or send donations. Thank you.
Great event, Counselor. There are no birthday today. Counselor Yem, need a motion to adjourn by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Mercy. On favor, say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry.